Hello, everybody. Welcome everyone to tonight's special meeting of Ridgefield Economic and Community Development Commission. There's one item on tonight's agenda, and that is an open discussion about retail marijuana. My name is Jeffrey Morris. I'm the Chair of the Economic and Community Development Commission. First of all, I'd like to welcome for selectmen Rudy Marconi, members of the Board of Selectmen who are present, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and other elected and appointed town officials, including my colleagues on ECDC. Thanks for being here. The purpose of the discussion is so ECDC can understand the new law that permits sale and possession of marijuana in the state of Connecticut. And what it allows and does not allow. We want to learn of the economic development possibilities while also exploring how it affects other aspects of the community from policing to public health. We want to learn the pros and the cons and the key learnings so that we can properly advise those who are making this decision. And the law puts the onus of that decision on the zoning commission to prevent or allow the sale of this. So to begin this discussion, we've invited three guests. We've invited Senator Will Haskell, State Senator Will Haskell, Meg Sanders, who's the CEO of Cana Provisions based in Massachusetts, and Sarah Duckett and Arthur Wylen from the Rural County Representatives of California. And first, we'll have our guests offer remarks, ask our town officials to offer questions and comments, and then address questions from the residents who are in this meeting. Some of those questions already come in to ridgefieldecdc@gmail.com, and you can continue to send questions there. But you can also, I believe, put them in in the chat, the question section of this meeting. So, you know, what's, what's behind this meeting? In June, Governor Ned Lamont signed a bill that allows for the possession of marijuana in the state by adults. That took effect this past July. The law will permit by the end of 2022, the retail sale of marijuana. I'd like to welcome now State Senator Will Haskell, who represents Ridgefield and other towns, to provide more insight into what the law allows and does not allow. Thank you for being here, Senator Haskell.
Jeff, thanks so much for the invitation, and it's great to see some, some familiar faces on the call tonight. For those who I haven't had a chance to meet in person outside of these little Zoom squares, my name's Will Haskell, and I represent the 26th District. So that includes the entirety of the town of Ridgefield, as well as six other communities down to Westport, over to Bethel, around to New Canaan. Look, I'll be very honest about the fact that in this conversation, I'm, I'm rather agnostic. I would categorize myself as a neutral party. I supported the cannabis legalization bill. I think that if Ridgefield decides to move forward with hosting a, a retail dispensary, that we've created some of the safest state framework in the country. Because more than a dozen other states have already made this step, Connecticut really had a chance to look at what works and what doesn't in other states, to build on best practices, to avoid poor examples. And now the question is for each municipality is really in the hands of their local officials. So I know that Ridgefield is in good hands with a very thoughtful P and Z and a very thoughtful Board of Selectmen led by my friend Rudy. For the purposes of keeping everybody informed and making sure we, we understand the bill, Jeff asked me to provide just a very brief overview of what is and isn't permitted under this legislation. So first and foremost, it applies only to those over the age of 21. There were many of us who fought in Hartford for very strict age limits. There was an original version of the bill that did not have an age limit. I think we're getting somebody's echo.
Could people mute? Could people mute, please? That'd be great.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyway, so it applies only to those over the age of 21. And it's also important to know that there is a, a quantity or a limit. So the law legalizes possession in one and a half ounces or or lower, or an additional five ounces if it's secured in your home or your car. It also allows some amount of homegrown, but it's not exactly taking all barriers off. You can, you're allowed to have three mature plants and three immature plants per person with a max of 12 plants per household. So if you own, if you're in possession of more than one and a half ounces, but less than five ounces, then you're subject to a fine. There's a first offense fine of $100, second offense fine of $250, and so on. If you're in possession of even greater amounts, well, then there's greater fines. The first offense is $500. The second offense is a classy misdemeanor. And then there are other crimes that remain in place, like those who are growing illegally, manufacturing illegally, the intent to sell, the intent to sell to somebody who's under 21. Those are all additionally considered a crime under our new statute. This is also going to be one of the most regulated industries in the country, and that's something I wholly support. That regulation is going to be housed within our Department of Consumer Protection. They've been staffed enough to make sure that they are able to require licensure and background checks for cultivators, for microcultivators, for packaging facilities, and retailers, and hybrid retailers, and food manufacturers, and product manufacturers, delivery services. Any, any step of this process, all the way really from seed to waste, is going to be regulated and monitored and subject to background checks by our DCP. There's so much to talk about with this bill. It was many, many, many pages long, but I want to hit just a few other central elements. One is, we want to make sure that this is done in an equitable manner. And what I mean by that is for decades, many people, and especially people of color, have spent years of their life or decades of their life behind bars for an industry that we're now legalizing. And we don't want, frankly, a whole bunch of corporations predominantly owned by folks who are white to all of a sudden become millionaires on the backs of a failed war on drugs that's negatively impacted so many communities. So as licenses, as these very first licenses are given out for retail facilities, there is actually a priority placed on those who are applying, on, on what are called under the statute, social equity applicants, meaning those who are required, who are living and working in census tracts that are, that have been especially hit hard by the criminalization of cannabis and by the war on drugs, and that are in need of economic opportunity and development. So social equity applicants are going to have a step up or a priority access within the lottery. I also want to mention that there is a local benefit. As I said, I'm, I'm agnostic as to whether or not Ridgefield decides to host a cannabis facility. But those who are in charge of making that decision, which is not the state senate, should know that there's a 3% sales tax based on gross receipts that's provided directly to the town in which the sale occurs. Finally, driving under the influence is a, a major concern for me and so many others. Of course, you know, we don't have a breathalyzer test, just as we didn't have a breathalyzer test at the end of prohibition and what law enforcement relied on at the time, where, you know, roadside sobriety tests. So this bill enables POST, which is the statewide Standards and Training Council for all police officers, to establish standards for non testimonial drug influence evaluation, essentially making sure that law enforcement tools, that law enforcement officers have all the tools they need in order to make sure that nobody is driving while under the influence. That includes under the influence of cannabis, because we know that that is so dangerous. There's much more to talk about. There's, you know, crimes associated with trying to use a fake ID for purchasing with the intent to sell to somebody who's under the age of 21. There's advertising restrictions. You're not going to be allowed to advertise for cannabis on a billboard unless you can, or, or the TV or over the radio. Because unless you can demonstrate that, well, the law basically says that an advertiser needs to have evidence that 90% or more of their audience is 21 or older in order to advertise in such a public manner. Because again, we don't want to be encouraging cannabis. That's the overall feeling of most of my colleagues in Hartford. But the reality is, people consume cannabis. Right now, they're doing so in a manner that's not just illegal, but they're, but also unregulated and unsafe. People don't know exactly what they, they're, they're smoking, for example. They don't know the THC. They don't know that if, whether or not it's laced with fentanyl or a more dangerous drug. And that's resulted in some really tragic circumstances around the state. So while we don't want to encourage the use of cannabis, we do want to be cognizant of the reality that people are consuming it, and we want to make sure that those who make that choice do so in a manner that's as safe and responsible as possible. And that means giving them information about exactly what's in the drug and what the THC level is. All of that's included in this bill. So anyways, I've gone on probably for too long, but Jeff, thanks so much for allowing me to say a few words.
Um, Will, thanks for being here, and I'm certain that others are going to have questions more about the bill, so please stick around. So our next guest, and you know, we'll go through our three invited panelists, and then we can open it up to questions from the town officials and then the residents of the town. Next up is Meg Sanders. She's the co-founder and CEO of Cana Provisions, a cannabis retailer based in Massachusetts. In 2010, Meg opened Mindful, one of Colorado's first medical cannabis dispensaries. And later she was appointed by Colorado's governor to assist officials in developing retail cannabis regulations after its voter approval of adult-use cannabis. So please welcome Meg Sanders. Thank you for being with us.
Isn't that going to be like the tagline for 2020, 2021 is, you're muted. I can't hear you. First of all, thank you so much for having me. And yes, I have significant cannabis experience, not only on the retail side, but also on the cultivation side, regulatory work, participated in a lot of work in Colorado in particular, actually testified quite a bit in Connecticut for the medical bill. So very experienced in the space, and overall, I think a thoughtful approach is what is needed. And I'm encouraged that there is, you know, a priority status for economic empowerment, social equity applicants. I will caution you that raising money in this space is challenging, and it can take a long time to get everything in order, in order to start moving your youth, yourself through the licensing process, the build-out process, and everything that goes with a highly regulated industry. So by being a highly regulated, regulated industry, it is a bit of a opposite of actually wanting social equity. So just be aware that that is going to come up. It's here. It's coming up in Massachusetts big time. It's been a huge priority, and very few applicants have made it through the process. So just, that's my first kind of stand, standpoint on that. One of the things that I think gets lost in this is that this is a product for adults. And adults are able to make their decisions based on, you know, what is best for them and what, what they want to put in their bodies, whether it be alcohol, whether it be cannabis, whether it be other things. So I think it's really important that we remember this is for people that are 21 and over. And there are safe, responsible ways to, to consume this, this product. And actually, the harms from this product are much, much less than any others. So I'd be really careful to lump it in with other type of prescription drugs or, or other heavier type of street drugs or alcohol. One of the things that I think is critical to, to remember is this is a business where, where a lot of money is invested in order to open. I think most people don't understand how much is, is required in order to get your doors open, from significant security system investments to a lot of security type of, 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 you know, entering and, and exiting of the, of the location, vaults and various safes that have to be put into place. And then there, you actually need more humans than the normal retail, because you're checking IDs, you have security, you have people that are handling your inventory, and then people that are working your sales floor. So it is, it is a very large economic burden to get open as well as to operate. I think people think, oh, I won the, I won a license, and really what a lot of the regulations nationwide end up being is a license to lose money. And with the heavy burden, heavy taxation burden that exists in this industry, because it's not federally legal yet, we have a massive, massive burden. And you can just basically take this as a, as a grain of salt in, you know, for you to understand, but we are not allowed to take any normal business deductions except for cost of goods. So payroll, rents, insurance, all of these things that normal businesses play, we cannot deduct from our taxes. So you can imagine what our tax burden is. It's, it's enormous. With that said, there is still opportunity for smart business owners to operate and to succeed in this space. And I think the first and foremost thing to remember is as any retail business, you have to be thoughtful about where you ask them to go. And what a lot of towns and municipalities do out of fear mostly is they relegate these locations to commercial districts or to not great retail locations. And sometimes that's just a recipe for failure. I'm hoping that we see evolvement here in Connecticut and watching where, where stores are allowed to operate. And I would encourage you to make sure that it is a fit for the community first and foremost, but it's also, it has an opportunity to succeed. And I, I would encourage all of you to really think about what that means. Sometimes, and there's been a lot of press about this, although it is really not an issue, except for maybe a handful of stores in Massachusetts. But parking and traffic comes up a ton, and you're going to hear that from your constituents if you decide to move forward. That's probably going to be the number one thing you hear. What about the traffic? And what about parking? And so part of that is just making sure that when you're doing zoning work on this, that you have thoughtful places that are conducive to a high-traffic, high-volume system of retail. And I think that's just really important to remember. One of the things to also remember is the average transaction in a cannabis store is between four and seven minutes. It really doesn't last very long. People come in, they buy their product, they, they pay for their product, and they walk out the door, they put their product in their trunk, and they drive away. It's, it's a fast turn and overall, you know, very smooth, very easy in and out. The other thing to remember is that the demographic of this, of an adult-use consumer is pretty interesting. I'll give you an example. At my store in Lee, Massachusetts, our average age is over 50. Our average income is over $75,000 a year. And really, all it's doing is bringing a lot of people with money in their pocket that also go to the rest of town and spend their money. They fill up with gas, they go to dinner, they shop, they, you know, they, they stay, they stay the night. We see just a huge benefit, as do most of the businesses in, in our, in our little town of Lee. And the same is true of Holyoke. We, it's just an amazing demographic that comes to visit us and spend their money. And we do see that they share that with other businesses. So I would look at it that as a possibility to really bring a lot more economic benefit to a town. I can tell you, in the town of Lee, we were able, our tax, our taxes alone that contributed to the city or to the town, it basically prevented property taxes from going up. And there's a big article about that written, and it was just a really encouraging show of how cannabis actually benefited town very much by bringing economic benefit, as well as through our tax rate, helping to make sure that the residents of this town didn't see any increases in their taxes. I would be very, very cautious about advertising rules, and I know we're talking, I know it's in the rules in the law right now, but at the end of the day, we're a business, and we have to get the word out. And so it's important, if you're going to have a cannabis store in town, that you're supportive of their, of their marketing within the rules. And I, I hear the, the 90% number. I can say for most states, it's between 75 and 85%. 90 is a little high, but there's, there's plenty of marketing available for that. It's not a bad thing to market to 21-year-olds and up. It's actually kind of why we're doing this. So because we don't want people to, to try to find this product on the street where it's not been tested, where it wasn't grown with, with thoughtful, you know, nutrients and maybe overuse of pesticides just to get product to the market. And in worst-case scenarios, it doesn't happen that often, but in worst-case scenarios where people decide to add really bad ingredients to a cannabis product. I can guarantee you that the, the people that are selling cannabis on the street aren't carding, they're not testing, and it's not the safest way to, to go and purchase your product. And overall, consumers want to be able to go to a licensed, regulated dispensary to purchase their products. Overall, that is what we're seeing.
Thank you very much. I'm sure people will have questions for you later, so please do stick around with, thanks for taking the time. I'm going to turn this over to my colleague Bob Knight, who's going to introduce our third panelists.
Sure, thank you, Jeffrey. One of them, both Arthur Wyleen and Sarah Duckett, from Rural County Representatives of California. RCRC is a joint powers authority. They represent 37 of California's 58 counties. And they operate with the power of the county's executives. And we're sort of instrumental in in getting legislation passed in California. But what's particularly interesting, why we wanted to, you know, speak with them tonight and, and hear what they have to say is because not all of their member counties and communities have legalized retail cannabis. And they have an interesting story as to why it works in certain communities and why it doesn't in others. And they were also able to give us sort of a very high-level view of, of what the economics and, and other issues are at play in the counties that have legalized it. So we can, you know, have a better understanding of, of some things. So we'd love to turn it over to, to you, Sarah, and to you, Arthur. And just a reminder to members of the public, if you have questions, please feel free to submit them to ridgefieldecdc@gmail.com. We're monitoring the email right now. Or you can throw that, throw them in the Q and A, and we'll chat with you later. Sarah and Arthur, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah Duckett. I'm a legislative advocate for RCRC, and I handle cannabis for our organization. Prior to joining RCRC, I worked on the ground for six years in Mendocino County, which is a predominant cannabis region in California, working with local elected officials and developing local programs from cultivation to retail. So I'm going to turn it over to Arthur, who's going to give you a high-level overview of the California experience, and then I'll finish up with a little bit of why some counties opted in versus opted out and some lessons learned.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sarah, and thank you very much to the commission for having us. I'm Arthur Wyleen. I'm general counsel for the Rural County Representatives of California. Prior to that, I was the county council, which is similar to a kind of a town attorney for Tahima County, California for 14 years, and did a lot of cannabis work both for them and for RCRC. So just, just really kind of, kind of background. RCRC is, as was indicated, an association of California's 37 rural counties. And we've been very, very heavily involved in the cannabis space in California, I think really since around 2011, 2012, really at the dawn of California's experiment with legal commercial cannabis activities. And the reason for that's relatively simple is that our counties are the counties where cannabis has grown disproportionately in California and actually disproportionately in the country. The wonderful Emerald Triangle of Mendocino, Humboldt, and Trinity are all within our membership. And consequently, policy decisions that got made, that get made, both at the local level and at the state level with regard to retail cannabis, have upstream effects that affect our counties as well. So we've been very, very heavily involved at every step of the way. Our advocacy point, and this is, I think, probably the sort of the first of the kind of high-level things that, that I'll mention, our advocacy point at RCRC, and indeed with all the municipal organizations in California, has been local control. You know, the idea that every community should make its own decisions with regard to what types of cannabis activities to permit, where to permit them, and under what conditions. And I think that kind of brings sort of, sort of the first, I guess, lesson that we've learned that I will try to pass on, which is that kind of like Spider-Man says, with great control comes great responsibility. We were quite successful in California in getting a fairly high level of local control. But we found that certainly the choices we make collectively, and indeed sometimes the choices that each city or county makes individually, can have an effect on that statewide dynamic, both on the market and on the political repercussions in future legislative and regulated activity, regulatory activity. And that goes both ways. If local jurisdictions have negative press articles about how they have not, not regulated well, not overseen well, that tends to respond to, to redound one way. Whereas on the other hand, if jurisdictions sort of reflexively say, no, we don't want commercial cannabis activities, we don't want retail, we don't want cultivation, that in turn generates pressure at the state level to, quote, override the local bans. And we see those bills probably once every couple of three years here in California. So the point I want to make is that the decisions that you make here, both how and with what vigor and what you allow, those will have impacts outside of your borders. One kind of brief thing to note as well is that, and this was, I think, maybe alluded to a little bit earlier, is that when looking at other states, in particular California, but I suspect this holds across looking at any other state, you know, Connecticut isn't California, and California isn't Massachusetts, and Massachusetts isn't Colorado. You know, each of those states faces different conditions and made different, different decisions at the state level that in turn affect how local governments react. So for instance, in California, and in California, the level of local control that we have, particularly in the fiscal realm, is a lot higher than Connecticut municipalities have. We don't have limits on local taxation. It requires a vote of the people to impose any tax, but with a vote of the people, you can tax cannabis businesses or indeed other businesses really almost without limit. We also don't have limitations such as the one that SB 1201 places on you about not being able to do local host agreements. We can do what we call a development agreement, which is basically the same thing without that restriction. And that affects, that affects local choices, because that in turn tends to make, make some sort of, sort of fiscalize some of those land use choices vis a vis cannabis in ways that you probably won't see. And there are a number of other collateral impacts as well. The other one that we ran into that you will probably have to a lesser extent, but nonetheless affected our choices and indeed made us make certain choices that probably don't seem to make a lot of sense, is that we do have, did have and do have an extremely vibrant incumbent industry. You know, obviously, there has been illegal cannabis activities pretty much since cannabis was made illegal, pretty much everywhere. But in California, it was a major economic driver in certain parts of the state, and indeed, a, at this point, a sort of multi-general way of life in, in certain parts of the state. And efforts to accommodate that, to bring the incumbent industry into the legal industry have really dominated a lot of our policy discussion here in ways that they probably won't in a state that doesn't grow nearly as much of anything outside as California does. So I think probably the, the biggest, kind of maybe biggest lesson that I would suggest that we've learned at the high level before we turn it over to Sarah to get into the weed of weed, as it were, would be to treat cannabis as a, treat your decision-making about cannabis as a land use. I think it's very easy when looking at cannabis, you know, commercial cannabis activities, to kind of get caught up in the idea that this is something different, this is something special, you know, this requires unique decision-making. But at the end of the day, I found, you know, whatever works at the state level, at the local level, we make the best decisions when we make the decisions we're familiar with, use the criteria we're familiar with, which is looking ultimately at land use decisions from a land use perspective, using land use criteria. You know, once you kind of strip away the glamour of, wow, we're talking about regulating reefer. You know, it really, a lot of those decisions, I think, in some ways become easier. You can start to look, you know, look at, okay, what are the traffic impacts? What are the parking impacts? You know, what are the public safety impacts? You know, are there particular security needs that are going to be different with a high-value commodity? You can start making those decisions, and ultimately, I think, looking at it with that filter, I think, makes it a little bit easier. Now, notably, looking, treating cannabis activities as a land use doesn't mean reflexively assuming that you're going to say yes. Not every land use is appropriate for every community. Any, any planner will tell you that. That's certainly true for commercial cannabis activities. But I think it's really important, this is something I've said to all of our member counties as they're considering primarily cultivation regulations, but retail as well, is that that's, if you start with that frame, I think it makes a lot of the things easier, it makes the dialogue with your community easier. And I think ultimately, you do make some of those better decisions that ultimately, as I indicated, do have, do have statewide impacts. The second thing, and I know this is a seminar about, or, or a meeting about retail cannabis activities, but one of the things I just say to everybody, and I can't not say to this group, is it's really, really important, if you're thinking about economic development vis a vis cannabis, to think beyond retail. Some of the, and, and we've seen this here in California, some of the most economically vibrant parts of the cannabis industry that, that bring the greatest level of jobs and prosperity to their community with really minimal levels of impact are not in the retail space. Manufacturing in particular doesn't have some of the, the public perception concerns, doesn't have some of the immediate impacts, at least any more than any other industrial use does. But that's really the future of the industry. There's a lot of money to be made there, a lot of jobs to be had there. Ditto things like storage, transportation, wholesale-type activities. These are things that there really is, particularly in California, we've seen the certain cities have been able to turn that into a niche. West Sacramento, for example, have really been able to, I think, get a lot of economic benefits without a lot of what are sometimes perceived to be the drawbacks of having retail cannabis, cannabis activities or cultivation activities. So I strongly encourage planners, select, select people, select them, to think beyond retail. Last but not least, before I turn it over to Sarah, it's really important for, I think, you know, cities and counties and towns individually and certainly collectively through the associations that you have to really stay focused and stay abreast of state legislative and regulatory changes, both in terms of obviously keeping your eye on the law as it changes and keeping your eye on the the regulations as they come out, but also staying engaged and advocating there. We've had a number of circumstances in California, because again, we've, we've had a lot more. I, I think a lot of the, the things that Senator Haskell referred to in terms of, of lessons learned and, and mistakes made elsewhere, I think we probably made all of them in California at least once. But one of the things that we have seen as a mistake that did get made is that we, we did notice sometimes that some of our jurisdictions seemed to get caught a little bit flat-footed when state regulators went in directions that we weren't expecting. They had to retool their local regulations and caused a little bit of, a little bit of consternation. I think to a certain extent, in a state that's, you know, may, maybe a, a little bit, a little bit more like Connecticut with maybe a little bit of a different rollout, I think some of that's avoidable, particularly if you stay engaged at, at the state level. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to start talking a little bit more, a little bit more directly. Thank you. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to start talking a little bit more, a little bit more directly. Thank you.
So I'll pick up where he left off with some of our lessons learned. So another thing just to keep in mind is you won't get it right the first time. No ordinance is going to be perfect, no state regulation is going to be perfect, it's going to be a learning process, and there's going to be a lot of changes, especially early on. As I start to develop their state regulatory system, you find out how you're going to interact with that, and you make some pretty big community decisions, and not getting it right the first time is okay. It's going to be a bit of a changing industry. But you'll eventually get there. But no, it's not going to be perfect the first go around. And you can learn from a lot of different cities and counties, both within your state and your surrounding states as you go through this process. And there may also be some areas of concern outside of retail that are probably going to come up in a lot of your communications. One that's probably the most common is what about people consuming at our concert in the park or at the street corner? So you're going to have a lot of other items come up that may not be directly related to retail. So you want to be prepared as you go through this public process to figure out how you're going to address some of those other impacts. The next item is really around the changes. There's going to be a lot of changes. A robust regulatory framework does not happen overnight. It's going to take time to have that set up and to have a whole entire licensing process set up. And even if you decide to say yes to get your own rules in order, finding the right business for your community, going through the license process, it's going to take time, and you need to be prepared to pivot and make changes and be flexible. Same with the federal level. We know that on the horizon, there will be federal changes that are going to impact every single state, town, county that has legalized cannabis from banking, distribution, a new regulatory framework. So this is an emerging industry, so there is going to be a level of flexibility and being able to pivot to address the changing regulatory landscape. The next lesson learned, if you do say yes, is don't underfund your program. You know, it will take time and money and resources, even if it is only one licensed retailer to put together your program, to check all those boxes, to do the inspection. And you're going to want to make sure you really think that through. A lot of organizations and cities and counties use some type of existing fee structure that didn't quite fit. So you're going to want to make sure that you plan ahead and think things through to make sure that you get your full cost recovery. The other, the next lesson learned is don't rush. Take your time. It's important to get public buy-in. And the California experience, it all happened really fast. And the state was going to launch their program July or January 1, 2018. So we had a few cities and counties kind of go first and really rapidly to put together a program so they were ready day one. And there was a lot of cleanup and changes that had to happen after the fact. And a lot of things that were rushed, where we had a lot of other counties and cities that took a little time, didn't feel the pressure to be ready on day one, and were able to hammer out a lot more of those details and ultimately had to make less changes down the road. And they had a more substantial period of time to really hear from the community and make sure it's a good fit, but also address some of those community concerns and really have that buy-in. And it's really important when you're going through that process of not rushing is one of the biggest things that comes up is the revenue to the community. They're going to be like, yay, this is a source of revenue, we can fund this program and this project. And it's really important to have those conversations on what you actually want to spend it on. A lot of times that is the benefit that's also going to be the selling point of saying yes. But this isn't, I think a lot of times people think cannabis is a cash cow, and I just don't think that's correct. These are small businesses, these are business owners, takes a lot of time to get established. So you want to make sure that you really think ahead of where you want to focus that 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 revenue. The next is keep your expectations modest. This will take time. Like an earlier speaker said, it is not easy in the most regulated market to finally open your doors and do business and then establish your customer base. So you're not going to get your retail location overnight, and you're not going to see necessarily that public benefit payoff right away. So it is a process. Have modest expectations. Maybe take the time to do a little revenue projection. And and it's a little bit more realistic. The next one is carefully vet your cannabis permittees. So every single county and every single city is unique, and you have your own character, and you have the type of businesses that you want to see. A lot of times, especially in areas that have chosen to do some type of cap, with Connecticut, you have a limit per population, you want to make sure that if you're going to move forward, that that business is ready and willing to be in your community, community. Up to the compliance standards, their their building, their aesthetics, them wanting to be up to code, that they're fully prepared prepared for the long haul, because it is going to be a long process to get to the point where they can open their doors. And they're going to be good neighbors and good partners and be a benefit to your business community as a whole. So there's a lot of different mechanisms that I've seen used, from a pre permitting process to a request for proposal process, where you can have some pre-application avenues to vet some of these candidates, to make sure that they're serious, they have the resources needed to actually do this and do this right.
Sarah, can I interrupt just for a second, please? Because I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves in working with the assumption that, because our town, we don't know whether we want to do this or not. And so, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of saying, here is how you make it work. I'd rather kind of look at some of the things that you looked at to say, this really made sense for us, but here were the big obstacles and here were the big drawbacks.
Yeah. So the the next section on kind of why people opted in, why people didn't. So I'll kind of start with the counties that decided that cannabis wasn't for us. One of it was simply that resource versus benefit. It just wasn't going to be worth our time and energy for one business because of the size of our community, and it just didn't make sense for our community. Another one was really just not a community, a lack of community support. They weren't okay with the concept of cannabis in general and were really concerned about what that impact would be for the community, their children, some negative impacts, whether it be parking or just an increase in consumption, what that meant for the crime. And they just weren't comfortable at that time to say yes. Another reason was it is a bit of a, in California, that revenue played a part. If they weren't going to make a significant amount of revenue off of taxes, they weren't going to do it. And they wanted to have it cover certain costs. If it wasn't going to do it, it wasn't for them. Another one that you may want to consider is just saturation. So you have a lot of different cities in a general area, and there was a lot of other counties or cities nearby that a high level of retail. So the people in their community had access to cannabis. So they weren't really concerned that there wasn't safe products nearby. And so they didn't think it was worthwhile to move forward with it. Some jurisdictions, they they allowed delivery, or they were like, delivery is sufficient to cover our jurisdiction. We don't need our own retail outlet. And I will say that some started off slow. They didn't feel like they had to say yes right away. So they said, no, hold on, we're going to take our time, we're going to really look at things, and no, now doesn't mean no forever. And so we did have some that early on said no, that like recently, like a year ago, said yes, we're willing to have cannabis or a limited form of cannabis in our jurisdiction. Those are primarily the big pockets of no, and I think there also was a concern just about enforcement. You may not have the same issue because you're talking about really limited retail and not necessarily large scale cultivation or other thing, but there was a concern about, do we have sufficient resources to actually make sure that the law is being enforced and taking care of the illicit market?
Okay.
And for our counties that opted in, just, it was really the economic benefit, it made sense, sufficient tax revenue. They had an existing industry, so they had, you know, medical prior to the legalization. And they wanted to incentivize people moving from maybe a gray market or illicit market to a legal market. And then, of course, finally, the consumer protection component, they wanted to ensure that there was access that was safe for their community members that chose to consume.
Thank you. Just for purposes of time, thank you very much. I just want to move and get on to the next stage. But before I do, Will, could you just offer one? Like, what were the main, what was the main opposition to the bill in the legislature?
Yeah, a great question. Now, I say this with a little bit of a biased point of view because I ended up voting for the bill. But there were folks who, some of my colleagues, who wanted to see, I guess, who who believed that when we legalize cannabis, we're sending a message to anybody, they especially worried about young people, that this is a entirely safe substance. I'm of the opposite opinion. I don't think that we're conveying that message. I think that we've established frameworks in this bill. I didn't even talk about packaging requirements, but making sure that, you know, these things are are not going to be packaged and sold and marketed in a way that especially appeals to young people and in a way that we're being transparent about the potential health risks of consuming the substance. It really puts puts the opportunity in the individual's hand to make an informed choice about what's right for them, but without encouraging them one way or the other. But I did have colleagues who worried that legal is legalizing is 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 normalizing. I think that the empirical reality is that people are consuming cannabis anyways, and I'd rather those who do who do so do so safely if they make that choice for themselves. By the way, Jeff, I'm hardly an expert here, and I know that this is just the start of a conversation, but I did want to mention that another really thoughtful player in this area is is my friend and colleague Representative Amy Berger-Girvallo. And I know that on, I think it's September 14th, she'll be having a follow-up conversation or another conversation with a lot of other experts in the field. So I don't I don't envy Ridgefield's task. Amy and I want to be resources to all of you as as you make this decision. We want to give you the tools that you need to make to make the call that's right for this town. But I think on the state level, we've set up a framework whereby if Ridgefield does decide to move forward, we can do so safely.
Thank you, Will. Appreciate it. Now I want to turn over to the people who will eventually be making the decision, whether Rudy Marconi or any members of the Board of Selectmen want to hop in here now. And I believe members of planning and zoning are also on the call. Would any of you like to jump in at this point?
Is it possible I could give just a little more color about Lee, Massachusetts, just just for, it's just an interesting case study, and there's been a lot of information that was provided regarding California, and I just wanted to just give a couple of points.
Okay.
Thank you. So first of all, Lee, Massachusetts has a population of 2,500 people. We are the only dispensary currently in town, and our revenue generated almost a million dollars for the town of Lee in 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 one year. And because we were able to do that, they did not raise property taxes. They were able to actually do a lot of things with that money, including benefits for the community. And I would say that revenue is not the reason why you want to choose this, as attractive as it can be. The reason you want to do this is because of the economic benefit of jobs, the economic benefit of actually bringing people to your town that are wanting to spend money in other areas of your town. And the other reason that I would say is so, so important when you're looking at whether you should do this, and hopefully you choose to opt in, is that you look at the businesses as they're coming to you. And one of the biggest pieces that I would advise you to require is serious engagement with the community and a serious commitment to making sure that your community directs, is benefiting benefiting directly from the store. And it's not hard to do, and as a cannabis owner, I can tell you our number one goal is to be excellent corporate stewards because we have to be. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we work directly with the police department, we direct directly with the fire department. I have them on my cell phone. I can call them at any time. Same with the select board. Same with with a lot of people that work with new services here, we work directly with them and field anything at all. So I want to just make sure that there's a big understanding of this isn't just about taxes, this is about jobs. This is about benefiting your town in a lot of ways. I have 112 employees at at my Lee dispensary, 112 in a town of 2,500 people. I'm a significant employer, and that has made a big impact in a in a town that doesn't have a lot of industry.
Miss, what do you have? I'm sorry, Jeffrey.
I just want to open some of the questions.
Sorry.
I just want to open some of the questions that we've gotten through the chat and through email. A number of people are talking about sort of the human and social impacts, like has, I mean, one, do the provisions in the bill allow for extra funding? But also, has there been any data recorded about how has changed, you know, substance abuse and mental health and, you know, traffic through hospitals or anything like that? Does our California friends want to jump in first?
Sure, I'll I'll take a take a little stab at that. So the short answer is, I will. This is one of those where I have seen studies on both sides of the subject, both of those, you know, showing that there is an increase in, you know, pick whatever negative effect it is, and those showing that there is there are not. A lot of those things, and I found, I've gone through a few of them, and I know Sarah may have more information than I do. But in most of those, the underlying differences between the studies, aren't there projections of what people are doing or going to do? It's their assumptions about what people wouldn't be doing if there were not, in fact, you know, retail, or in our case, we focus a lot on cultivation. This may be different, California versus Connecticut. Again, this may be one of those things that is hard to export. But given the relative ubiquity of cannabis usage and cannabis cultivation here in California, I will say for myself, I have not seen anything convincing me that legalizing cannabis in a jurisdiction really moves the needle a lot. But like I said, that may be something that is maybe more applicable to California than Connecticut. I'm not aware of any hard data that would support really one conclusion or another. Sarah?
Just in concurrence with Arthur, I think there's data out there that could support both sides. And, you know, what might be an interesting dynamic is getting in touch with the city that's very similar to you to see if they've had big impacts. But there hasn't been a lot of data, and just from my time in local government, a lot of the impacts maybe necessarily weren't the impacts we thought about, you know, kids having access or crime going up, and that just really didn't come up. A lot of the other things, it's it's more land use space, like the parking and crowding. Also, there's a lot of debate about concern with people onsite consumption, and what does that mean? So it was a lot more on the land use side and not as much harder data on the social side.
Someone from the Prevention Council is asking what precautions have or will be put in place to ensure that people under 21 do not get access. I mean, that's partly a question for the bill itself, but, you know, obviously, this is an issue in all the other states that have this. Is it? Is it a big issue?
Oh, sorry, the the folks from other states should go first. I'm happy to speak to some of the things in the bill afterwards.
Meg, do you have any insight into that?
Certainly. So I will speak for California. I will say of all of the bumps and hiccups that California has had in its rollout of legalized cannabis, I will say diversion from the legal market to underage underage consumption really has not played a major part. Where we've had issues of noncompliance or concern in the retail cannabis space, it's usually things around people who aren't authorized to own cannabis businesses, owning ownership shares. It's usually things on the business side like that. I'm not aware of significant instances. That doesn't mean there hasn't been any, but a significant consistent instance of legal regulated retailers selling underage. That just, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but it's not, this is not something that is that happens a lot, at least not that we know of. Sarah?
Okay, I'm happy to share too that in Massachusetts, it doing that is a license, it's a license ending event. You're done. So you can take the $1.5 million you invested in your dispensary, and you can just flush it down the toilet. So it's a very serious, very serious issue, and we take it incredibly, incredibly seriously. And it is something that is, we check IDs three times, and we regularly turn away people that have damaged or even suspect IDs. It's just, it's not even on the table. As far as people taking a product from a recreational dispensary and then selling it on the black market potentially to to underage, the price is just not going to support that. So what the what the gray market or the legacy market is offering for an eighth of cannabis versus what I'm selling it, it's significantly higher to buy it from me. There is no market for that.
Do any members of the ECDC have anything you want to jump in before I ask Bob Knight to read some of the emails that we're getting?
I have a question. You know, we talked a lot about proper capitalization. Revenue was a misnomer, which I think is pretty interesting, actually, that we shouldn't view retail sales as a as a cash cow. A number of you have have made that point, which I'm going to ask you to elaborate on a little bit. Arthur, I believe you had said that that if, you know, we're looking at cannabis, maybe, you know, retail isn't necessarily the end game here, maybe it's thinking beyond it in terms of manufacturing. I would assume that's like the, you know, like the the oils and the creams and the edibles that that are a part of that. And we're talking about industrial uses, storage, transportation, wholesale activities. I'm particularly interested in this manufacturing piece, you know, because there are some, you know, large, you know, properties in town that that could potentially be used for that down the road. What does that entail in terms of manufacturing? Does it entail a grow operation? You know, are there odors involved? Um, what does that entail in terms of manufacturing? Does it entail a grow operation? You know, are there odors involved? Can you fill us in a little bit on that, please?
Um, certainly, uh, certainly. Um, so no, both under California law and if I'm reading SB twelve oh one correctly, and I will, I have not an ex. I'm not licensed in Connecticut. I am not an expert on Connecticut law. But if I'm reading SB twelve oh one correctly, it's this way under SB twelve oh one, is that cultivation and manufacturing are are separate license categories. They're separate activities. You may have one outfit that does them both, but those are separate licenses, and you can basically, they're they're licensed at the state separately, and you can zone them separately. So manufacturing typically involves the typically. The um, extract, the extraction usually of oils of some kind or of extracts from the 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 physical product from from the plant material. And then usually the, you know, refining and testing of that and its infusion into. Usually, although baked products are 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 kind of conventional to think about, what we're seeing in California are typically things more like. Um, you know, more like beverages, uh, vapes are really, really big out here, uh, things of that nature. Um, so I will say the you don't get the odor impacts that you might from a cultivation operation, particularly an outdoor cultivation operation. Uh, the impacts that we've seen tend to look more like your uh, standard, you know, standard industrial facility. So you do have some, you do have some traffic impacts relating to employees and transportation. Um, you know, you would want to uh, basically, if you did get a a manufacturing licensee, you know, do all the things you do for any any new industrial use. You'd want to talk about odors, and are they using best available control technologies with regard to any equipment that they're using? Um, but for the most part, you looks and feels and gets regulated. Again, assuming you say yes, and I don't want to. That any any city or county either here in California in our membership or or uh, back east would do. But if you did say yes, that would be kind of more the decision making process that you'd use, because there's really not a lot of public contact there. It's really more. You know, what does the equipment look like? How big is it? How much noise? How smell? How much traffic? Things of that nature.
And I I think you're being, you know, peppered with a lot of these types of questions, just, you know, it's it's easy to say no. Um, and it's it's harder to say yes. So I think a lot of us, we're we're just trying to wrap our heads around, you know, all of this so we can make. Informed decisions. So so appreciate um, you know, appreciate your comments, you know, in in, you know, you know, our at ECDC, our. Our umbrella here is economic developments, tax based jobs, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, one of the things is is the changing demographics of the region. As a result of the pandemic, we have many new residents who moved up from the city, you know, younger residents, and I'm looking at a Pew study from April twenty twenty one. Where, you know, younger demographics are overwhelmingly pro um, medical and recreational use. Um, and, you know, thirty to forty nine, fifty to sixty four overwhelmingly pro, sixty five plus, it's. A little more uh, anti, sixty five seventy four, it's about fifty three percent pro, seventy five plus, it's thirty two percent pro, fifty three. Percent um, anti. Uh, so, you know, it it's. Is there a correlation between um, medical and recreational use in terms of sentiment and how? The various counties or communities throughout California approached retail cannabis, or was it really more of an economic driver?
Um, so I'll say at least initially, and again, I think I probably will ask Sarah to to weigh in because she got a front row seat in Medecino of of community, you know, community. Uh, input there. I I will say, I think initially in Calif, so one thing, so California hasn't seen. Big differences in our rollout uh, in our rollout of commercial medical uh, versus commercial adult use. They were originally permitted by separate laws, the. Uh, Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, and then ultimately the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. Um, but but our our regulatory schemes, our our regulatory agencies immediately started essentially paralleling and ultimately combining the regulatory schemes for those two. Largely because the market here, both the the consumer market uh, and the uh, you know, and the the local regulators really were kind of treating them as part and parcel. Now, part of that is that California has always had an extremely broad definition of of medical, medical uh, cannabis. Indeed, that's one of the things that most states that went after us. Did not replicate was how broadly medical cannabis was allowed to be used, and consequently, they almost became synonymous with recreational cannabis. Um, but realistically, I think a lot of what drove acceptance of both in California were really some of those. Some of those demographic issues, some of those, you know, social issues, you know, views toward, you know, cannabis in general. It tended to promote acceptance of acceptance of both or neither. That's not, that's not a universal truism, but I think in general. Um, that there weren't a lot, wasn't a huge amount of daylight on the policy discussions. Sarah, what are your thoughts?
You know, we actually do have a few counties that decided to really just go the medical route and really. Um, allow medical and also kind of restrict some of that personal use option. Um, but most of it was all or nothing. I think that what was really interesting um, is a lot of the cannabis community that really came out to. Um, advocate on moving forward with it tended to be um, a lot more steeped in the medical benefits of of cannabis and why it's an important thing. Um, and I think some of the members of the community, it was a really important concern, but I think there was a lot of people in the middle that were just unsure. They didn't really know how they felt about cannabis. They didn't know what way they wanted to go. Um, and. That's where the interesting conversations, and I think a lot of the community impacts was kind of the make or break of what way we're going to go. But there's definitely a lot of communities that hesitated, which I think is why we saw uh, an influx of people saying yes, a few years after. This uh, the legalization happened. Um, to really kind of see what does this actually look like on the ground, and what was it like in the the city next door, and do we want to go down that? I think we saw a lot later.
Well, in a couple of passages that I read of the the bill, there seems to be funding and provisions for both police training. As well as, you know, whether hospital and substance abuse centers are going to have any kind of impact. Do you know, can, was that a big discussion point?
Yeah, Jeff, thank you for that question. Uh, and I I saw in the um, you know, some of the comments that came in at the Prevention Council's participating tonight. First off, thank thanks for the work that you do. The bill provides funding, but also uh, tasks the Alcohol and Drug Policy Council. Uh, to work jointly with the the Department of Public Health, the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, the Department of Children and and Family. To um, to figure out how we can make the investments really count to promote public health, science based harm reduction, to mitigate misuse. Um, and and the risk of cannabis addiction, to effectively treat. Uh, those who are addicted to a substance with um, with a real focus on those under twenty one, to make sure that we're collecting and reporting data. Um, on epidemiological surveillance and review of consumption habits. So. There's, there is a lot in here that I think the prevention, even if the Prevention Council might disagree with portions of the bill. I think that uh, there's a lot in here that they will appreciate, given the work that they do, so that their state is making science based decisions on how to make sure this doesn't fall into the wrong hands. And I really, I've learned a lot from listening to the folks uh, who do this work in other states. I'm so relieved to hear that the harsh penalties that are currently um, on the books. Are are sufficiently preventative in terms of making sure this doesn't fall into the hands of those who shouldn't be purchasing it. I think what what Meg said was really striking with regard to. It being a nonstarter, asking for three forms of ID, turning away those who have any sort of damage. Under existing law in Connecticut, um, you know, nothing is changing in this bill, or this bill doesn't change anything about the fact that there is a. A felony penalty for illegal sale um, or related actions of of even a kilogram or more of cannabis by someone who is um, you know. With enhanced penalties if the seller is at least two years older than the buyer. Um, so, and and who is under eighteen, and if the sale occurs within a certain distance of a school or a public housing project or a childcare center. So I think there is a lot in this bill to um, to emulate that, that really um, really strong regulation in other states.
Bob, do you have any other emails? Thank you, Will.
Yes, we've uh, received a number of emails to richfieldecdc@gmail.com, and just really want to thank members of the community for um. Uh, you know, writing in a um, in a neighborly fashion. Uh, there's some really thoughtful questions. Uh, we'll go through some comments first, and Jeffrey, if you would just sort of interrupt, if if you want um, the town officials and guests to. Field some of these, or if I should just keep rolling with um, with reading some of these. Uh, Michael Donley says he wants to share his lack of support for sale uh, in use in Ridgefield. If it is approved, it will be like other cities where everywhere you go, you'll be greeted with a stench of pot. It's not enough that it is already available at RHS and elsewhere. Why open a store to sell it? We'll put a stain on this unique town. Joanne Kona, who's a property owner in Branchville, uh, has a statement and a question. Uh, is there a way to preserve the town's ability to have a retail marijuana license until it can be voted on by the town constituency?
That's from Mitch and Kona, by the way. Mitch and Kona.
Oh, Mitch and Kona, I'm so sorry. Um. Is there a way to preserve the town's ability to have a retail marijuana license until it can be voted on by the town constituency? I would like to see the town's ability to have a retail marijuana license preserved until the town constituency has had the ability to vote on the question. Uh, Max Porter uh, from Hamlet Hub is uh, sent a number of questions. Do you, uh, would you like to um, speak with members of the media after the the form, Jeffrey?
Well, I, some of his questions, I think, have been have been answered. But if you want to throw one out there, that's fine. And, you know, I do continue to welcome members of the Board of Selectmen and Planning and Zoning. To jump in if they have anything to offer, as well as any members of ECDC.
I should come back to these um, in just a moment. Suzanne Brennan uh, says legalization of recreational. Marijuana sales and use in more states, public perception is shifting towards support. But there's not enough public awareness about dangers related to marijuana drug use, especially among younger people. There's no argument that legalization enhances drug supply, reduces disapproval, uh, and increases use and experimentation. Weed enthusiasts continue to push for more business ops in Colorado where legalization happened in twenty fourteen. Her question is, what can be done to restrict uh, dispensaries and busy shopping districts and other kid friendly locations near schools, church, healthcare facilities? Weed SUV and mobile party buses, pot lounges, cannabis bars, weed delivery businesses, recreational offerings as part of a theater, art class, et cetera. Locations where public can smell or see pot smoking. Put a lot of thought into this, Suzanne, controlling potency of addicting weed products. Second question is, was Connecticut doing to fund and increase number of addiction substance abuse treatment facilities? Uh, or substance use treatment facilities, public awareness and education? Um, do you want to take any of those, or shall I continue on with?
Will, Will has his hand up.
I I'll jump in um, just very briefly. Suzanne's a a good friend, and I think she raises some really interesting um, some really interesting issues. So I, Kurt, Kurt, we have a law in Connecticut that already prohibits smoking and e-cigarette use in various locations. Healthcare institutions, restaurants, uh, state buildings, municipal buildings. This bill adds cannabis to that list uh, of of what's prohibited in those locations, and it also expands um, the the areas where it's prohibited. So. For example, you can't um, smoke cannabis within twenty five feet of a doorway, uh, inoperable window, an air intake vent. Um, in addition to the inside of a restaurant or uh, another prohibited building. It also um, it says that uh, school zones, for example, of course, are are an area where cannabis smoking is prohibited. Within the grounds of a family daycare home, uh, any area of a retail establishment, uh, rather than just a retail food store accessed by the public, any area. Of a higher education dormitory, uh, instead of just inside it. Uh, a any area of a halfway house or residential facility funded by the judicial branch. So. I do think that there are some restrictions as to how frequently we'll be seeing this, smelling this, um, if if Ridgefield decides to move forward.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, and I should say that that it's not just the substance itself, the advertising restrictions, which I mentioned earlier. There is an advertising restriction on cannabis or cannabis products, uh, that it can't be advertised in any physical form to the public within five hundred feet of an elementary or secondary school ground. Uh, a rec center, um, a childcare center, a playground, a public park, a library, all of that's contained in this bill as well.
Anyone want to jump in before Bob goes on to the next question?
Jeffrey, if I if I could just share that there is.
Steve Spivak is a member of ECDC.
Uh, thank you. As, uh, you know, as a a parent in town, I certainly, uh, it was with school age children, um, you know, I certainly weigh. Um, the impact of legalized marijuana uh, accessible in town. Um, and you know, the thought of that getting into the hands of of children, school age, high school, et cetera, is is of concern. Um, but I do also realize that we have something like nine liquor stores in town, um, all over town. Um, and the sale of alcohol has been somewhat successfully regulated, but the sale of. Legal cannabis, um, the thoughtfulness that has gone into um, making sure that the the legal sale of cannabis provides for. Mitigation addiction programs, keeping it out of the hands of the people it doesn't belong to, um, contributes to the tax base. Zoning and planning, et cetera, et cetera. I think we we need to look at those underdeveloped, underutilized areas of town. Where landlords can't find tenants, um, you know, where they're far away from areas of residential population, far away from schools. And see, is there a viable potential uh, success story here? Where we can create a a win win for the town, um, and we can create a viable enter enterprise that contributes to the town. Um, you know, without just letting the fear of the unknown kind of derail this whole, this whole thing. I think the state has done its a a good job with its due diligence. Um, and I think there are scenarios where this this can work, but, you know, again, coming at it from the standpoint of. Not only someone who, you know, was involved in economic community development, but also as a parent. I do think there's a a path forward for those areas of town where where, you know, they aren't Main Street, you know, and there is. An opportunity for for a business, maybe a nontraditional business to thrive.
Thanks, Steve. You know, I want to, um, a question just came up on the chat. That I would throw out to, but, you know, Arthur, Sarah, or even Meg, even though it is talking about California, it says California is inundated with homeless people. Using drugs on the streets. How many of those people started by smoking marijuana?
Oh, let me take a stab at that one, and Sarah can can chime in. Um, so one, I'm not aware of any particular statistics on on that. On on that in particular. I I will say, you know, California's in experience with homelessness, so particularly over the last ten years, it gets a humongous. Amount of public policy attention here. Uh, there are a number of factors that contribute, and people argue pretty much endlessly about what those factors are. You know, is it increased cost of housing, which in California is, I don't know, I'm sure it's outrageous everywhere, but it's pretty bad here. You know, is it um, you know, inadequacies in our mental health treatment system, or it's, is it certain changes in the criminal justice system that were made about ten years ago? But the one thing I will say that I have not heard anybody attributed to, and there's a lot of public health minds looking at this, um, it is cannabis usage. There's a lot of potential causes. I have not heard that one. That's not to say, I mean, the the absence of evidence is not evidence of absence, so I'm I'm hesitant to argue uh, that there's no possible connection, but I will say that I've not heard that one, nor have I seen the evidence to that fact. Sarah?
Yes, there's definitely substance use that plays a part in homelessness in California, not necessarily attributed to just cannabis. And of course, a larger mental health crisis and housing. So in here in California, homelessness is a very complicated issue, but it's definitely. I've never heard it particularly attributed to just cannabis. Um, it's quite complicated of the reason why we're in this situation that we're in.
Could I, could I ask a question of Meg, Sarah, and Arthur? Um, have there been any examples that you're aware of? Of communities where cannabis is legal, where the industry has supported programs that are not related to cannabis? For example, mental health programs, educational programs, where that benefit, that financial benefit to the community has been put to use. In a way that's not directly related to cannabis to support the communities where cannabis is legal.
Um, I can speak to that. Um, so I I'm sure we kind of covered that briefly in my bio, but. I have a cultivation in California. I have operated in Colorado for nine, for no, ten years. I also have a dispensary in Illinois, um, and I've advised all over the nation with regards to state and local governments on on thoughtful regulation. So with that said, um, in Berthold, Colorado, where I had a medical and now adult use dispensary. Um, it one, we single handedly because, and we were the only dispensary in town, but because of our revenue that we generated for the town and also the the um. The state of Colorado capturing that revenue at the state level. Our school was able to go through a significant renovation, and it became just the most gorgeous school you've seen. So. There are plenty of examples of cannabis dollars going back to the community specifically earmarked for for educational facilities. For mental health, for, um, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a gamut, and and that's all, that can all also come right down to the local level as far as how do you want to use this revenue? And how do you want to improve your community? Um, and I think that that's a thoughtful thing to do beforehand, before uh, but before you have a an ordinance in place. I hope that answered your question.
And. I will say, I. We experienced this in the county that I worked for before. We had quite a few businesses that were really, I would call them community partners. Um, we had a bit of a wildfire issue in certain parts of our community. They were involved in our Fire State Council, helped fund projects for defensible space. Helped um, adopt highways to keep. helped, um, adopt highways to keep them clean. We're a big sponsor of like youth, youth sports and community events through our local city. So like your concerts in a park and those different types of things you offer in the summer, they were there for sponsorship. Um, and in general, we're really good community partners, and I would say the vast majority of them, that was the case. I mean, there are a few that just weren't necessarily going out of the way besides being a normal business, but we had quite a few. Um, they wanted to be not just a dispenser and not just a cannabis business, but like a business active in the chamber and supporting different community events. And I think that goes back to, if you're going to say yes, it is important to like, make sure the business is the right fit for your community that cares about your community, and wants to see it thrive. And that's going to be a defining factor of, I think, success.
You know, Meg, I have a question for you. There, there were, uh, there's, it sort of combines a couple of questions. Someone referenced that there's going to be, uh, that Westchester and Putnam Counties and, on, uh, across the New York border, uh, have, uh, potentially banned cannabis sales, uh, in retail. Looks like there's something going on in Danbury, I think, near Trader Joe's, uh, that, which is nearby to us. And, you know, there were, another question is, do communities surrounding Lee also sell cannabis? Trying to sort of tie the thread together, because Lee is, uh, you're fairly close to the New York border, but there's other, um, communities in Massachusetts around you, and, and yet you're kind of a giant there.
Oh, that's a great question. So 15 minutes south of us is Great Barrington, and there are six dispensaries open there. And 15 minutes to the north of us is Pittsfield, Massachusetts. And there, I believe right now, the total is going to be 10 dispensaries, I, which I think eight are currently open and operating. Um, you know, so it, it really is specific and, and, you know, I, fortunately, I've been doing this a very long time, and I chose a retail location within the zoning that was of maximum benefit for my business.
Um, one obstacle that I've heard, some town official says that marijuana leads to, um, more, you know, different types of drugs, that no heroin addict has ever not started out smoking marijuana. Um, have you seen any way that this manifests itself in the legalization? Has it, one, do you see any truth in that? And two, does the legalization of it have any impact on that?
So I, I would like to weigh in on this very specific issue, because it is, um, near and dear to my heart, and I am very passionate about, uh, one of the, in my opinion, the biggest health crisis we have, way worse than COVID, by the way, is heroin addiction. And most of those, by the way, start with a prescription from your doctor. It's not street, it's not the street, it's not marijuana, this notion of gateway drug. It, it just is not my experience or my understanding of it. Um, I want to be very clear that when you look at in particular, um, s- communities that I've studied, where there is significant community support and thoughtfulness around heroin addiction. I, I have to tell you, nine times out of 10, it starts with a, with a prescription from your doctor. It's not from smoking marijuana. Um, and, and I wish, by the way, I wish that alcohol, so bars and, um, liquor stores, et cetera, were held to the same standard that I was held to, as far as they should be, before they get a liquor license. They should have a, a very good plan on how they're going to contribute to AA and other, um, ways to make sure that, that, that kids aren't utilizing alcohol.
Thank you.
Good question from an elected official from, um, Tim Mohotra, who's a member of the school board. Um, the question is, do they plan to bring in more programs like with alcohol addiction to help support people who become addicted? And for Senator Haskell, if the state plans to set aside more funding to help those, uh, who become addicted and need support?
I, I think, um, Will may have had to disappear. I'm not sure.
No, no, I'm, I'm still here, Jeff, and, and yet, uh, Tina, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the, um, there is anticipated revenue from this legislation. There's, in addition to the sales tax revenue that's collected, there's also, uh, pretty extensive application fees, uh, for licensure. Um, that revenue goes into a pot, some of which will be, uh, spent on diversionary programs, uh, alcohol and drug education, substance abuse assistance, uh, education in school programs, training for law enforcement officials to make sure that they have the tools they need. So the short answer to your question is yes, and, um, Tina, if you'd like to talk offline, I can get the numbers for you. But we're, it, it's important to note, we're still a ways away from this. We're not going to be seeing recreational, uh, cannabis facilities opening up in 2021. So, uh, it, it's early in terms of, uh, getting hard numbers on revenue.
Yeah, I mean, just a reminder of what was said at the beginning. It's at least a year away before anything can open. And so, you know, the whole idea of this conversation is to get people talking about it. And because, you know, it's going to be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in a couple of weeks about, uh, you know, I think the point of the public hearing is whether to have a moratorium, um, which would mean let's put a hold on it until we can really understand it. And so, you know, this is the beginning of a dialogue, and, you know, I, I'm glad P and Z is doing that as well, because this, a lot of this is really a land use issue. Um, anybody else in the? Many of our town officials are not, um, weighing in. But, um, Bob, do you have any other, uh, questions from the emails?
Uh, yeah, there's, um, you know, Max Porter, but he, he's thrown his into the chat that, uh, that you can take care of here in a second. Bill Bruno from, um, Non-Road has a kind of extensive, uh, group of questions here. Um, I and many other Richfielders are anxious to hear the answers to the question below, and I think it would be important to have representatives from, um, Richfield Police and Fire Departments, as well as, uh, medical doctor or mental health doctors who advise independently and report to decision-makers on these two important issues before any decisions are made. And, and, and I should point out, Jeffrey, I think the ECDC's intent is to have, you know, a series of community conversations like this tonight, so that, that's good for the future. So first, what is public safety? State of Colorado has extensive experience with regard to public safety, impact and marijuana. They experienced a significant increase over 150% annually from 2013 to 2019 in fatal car accidents involving marijuana after legalization, commercialization of marijuana in the state. Public safety is also likely to be affected, and more people are going to be injured and die in Connecticut if there is wide availability of this drug and new resources are not deployed to manage the impact. A, has the human social cost, injury and death of increased impaired driving accidents been included in the economic analysis of the ECDC in making their recommendations? B, what's the cost of training and increased staffing for the Richfield Police and Fire Departments in order to detect and control cannabis impaired driving in the area? What are the costs of the police, fire, and EMT resources that would be required to service increased accidents? Is it new equipment to detect cannabis impaired drivers available for police and fire professionals to use? And what is the cost? Has this been included in the ECDC analysis? I could, I can actually, uh, from personal experience, I was once hit when I was a teenager by a, uh, a driver who was clearly impaired, uh, you know, from, uh, from marijuana, and, um, you know, I'd be interested in hearing that, that answer as well. Uh, second one is for public health. According to verified analysis from NIH, apart from medical cannabis use, recreational users are exposing themselves to several negative short-term and long-term health im- impacts associated with adults' use of cannabis. And the impact of people under the age 21 is even more severe. Trends in hospital admission data from Colorado 2013 to 2019 support the real-world impact and cost of these conditions. These include, among others, psychosis, memory loss, schizophrenia, depression and anxiety, suicidal ideation. Additionally, scientific evidence supports structural, functional, chemical brain changes among cannabis users that may be linked to the above conditions that may have further mental and similar long-term, uh, health impacts. Users who consume through smoking suffer lung damage, higher COVID severity, and similar long-term cancer risk as tobacco smokers. A, has the human social and direct medical costs of these health impacts been included in the economic analysis of the ECDC in making their recommendations? And B, has the increased cost of trading and staffing for area hospitals, as well as for mental health and other health professionals been assessed? Have any of these costs been included in the ECDC analysis?
I mean, I think that, you know, any, any discussion on this is going to have to be, you know, people are currently smoking marijuana, and if it's legalized, are they're going to be smoking more marijuana? And, you know, so it's not a matter, so is legalizing going to have people smoking more, driving more, and having more substance abuse, or is that not the case? And so, you know, all those, you know, hospitals have to deal with things, and police have to deal with people driving under the influence of any substance. And so the question is, does legalizing and, and does selling it in our town affect that? You know, that's ultimately how we have to think about it. It's not a debate whether marijuana is good or bad. The debate is whether, um, selling it is going to have negative impact on social behavior.
And Jeff, and Jeffrey, if I could add into exactly what you're saying. Um, marijuana has been legalized in the state of Connecticut, and, uh, we can't change that. Uh, we are one town, and we can decide whether we want cannabis retail or not. And that is the only decision, and I don't dispute that there are, there can be bad social and medical side effects. Um, but the, the only question for the town is, do we want to allow retail sales?
Yep.
And one more email from Kirk Carr. Uh, says, thanks for organizing this hearing. Big takeaway is, don't rush into this. Do your research and think it through. The P, uh, planning zone moratorium is essential to buy the time for ECDC planning zone and the board of selectmen. Need to study all the, um, uh, permutations and variables. Everything else, all the other questions are in the chat.
And Jeff, and everyone else, uh, uh, this is Dan McCarthy speaking. Just wanted to chime in, if anybody on this panel, in the questions, anywhere along the way, if anybody's interested in just a deeper connection to active use on the ground in a legalized state, data-based approach, whether it's, um, what Glory was just asking about, do we want this in a retail commod- uh, commodification within the state? All the way through to available data within increases in teen uses. As you can imagine, everything you guys are anticipating, curious about, or wondering, has already happened in every other state with this legalized cannabis. So anybody that's looking for a connection point, I'm happy to provide that to both Meg Sanders and anybody within, uh, cannabis provisions in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I would also extend an invitation to anyone on this panel, if you'd like to come for a personal tour of exactly how it works. I, you, you're more than welcome to come and visit me in Holyoke or in Lee, and I'm glad to give you a top-to-bottom tour of every single aspect of the facility.
Thank you. So I think that, um, I'm not seeing any hands raising, and everyone on the panel has had their opportunity to make a comment or ask a question or offer their own views. So I'm gonna be an auctioneer and say, going once, going twice. I think we're gonna, um, adjourn this special meeting of the Ridgefield Economic Community Development Commission.
Thank you.
Um, I, do we need to, we need to, um, some motion and second motion, and we all vote.
Yeah, just, just one quick question. Is, is this Zoom, that we have had a number of questions?
Yeah, thank you for saying, yes, yes, it is. This, um, is being recorded. It's on Comcast right now, um, and it's available on ridgefieldct.org under recorded meetings, meeting videos. So go, you can go to ridgefieldct.org and go to, um, meeting videos, and you can find it there.
We'll put a link also on the ECDC website.
And ridgefieldct.com.
Yeah, an easy place to find it, too.
Um, and if anybody has questions for our panelists after this, and you don't know how to reach them, you can email ridgefieldecdc@gmail, and we can get those, um, to you. Um, so anybody want a motion that we adjourn?
I saw a motion.
Second, anyone? Someone please second.
Sean, Bob, Bob, Steve.
Okay, all in favor, we adjourn this special meeting? All right, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks for having us, Jeff, and, and everybody.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Take care.